Lord Jesus, Father God, we pray for the city of Blue Ridge. We pray, pray for all those people that serve the city. From our councils to our boards, to the employees here. We pray for unity, we pray for the upcoming elections, we pray for success in this area, and we pray for everyone's family here tonight. In your name we pray.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you all. So now we'd like to introduce some new members and then have a... Mayor Rondehead's gonna swear them in. So, Mr. Mike Panter, Bill Barber, and Angelina Powell. So we welcome you all to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I'm going to just ask you all to stand at the same time and read each of your oaths. I will read the oath and then you will say I do. You can raise your bottles up here and... Okay, so you can raise your right hand and keep your next question.
I got it.
And I will, I'm going to read the oath and we'll draw three from it. I...
Mike Panter. William Barber.
Angelina Powell.
A citizen of Fannick County, State of Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will, that I will well and fully perform the duties of the Planning Commission of the City of Blue Ridge, Georgia. That I will faithfully enforce the laws of the city. That I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. And that I will do in all of my power to promote the general welfare of all the inhabitants of the city of Blue Ridge and the common interest thereof. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not a holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state of political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States and other states or any foreign state for which laws of the State of Georgia I am the provision of controlling, that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia. So help me God. Please say, would you swear by the oath?
My name?
I do.
I do.
If you will please sign your name and at the bottom you can sign your new signature and then we will have a note reading at such time as we're witnessing it now. If you can remember who you guys are. You know, officials, thank you for doing the service as it's a great service for our community and we appreciate your call.
Thank you.
It's nice to have a full house.
Yes, sure is.
Alright, so we're gonna proceed to item four?
Yes, please.
Alright, so I'm gonna read the, for the public hearing in consideration of motion regarding an ordinance number B R two zero two five dash one zero. An ordinance to amend Chapter 140 zoning, Section 140 dash four, which is the use of definitions. Section 140 dash seven seven, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash one zero six, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash one three two, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash one five four, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash one eight three, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash two one three, area yard and height regulations. Section 140 dash two four one, area yard and height regulations. And section 140 dash three zero nine, area yard and height regulations of the code of the City of Blue Ridge, Georgia with respect to building heights to provide for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir.
Some, you may just...
Yes, I'll be happy to brief everyone on this. This is a zoning text amendment that has been initiated after discussion with members of the city council considering amending the definition of building height in the zoning ordinance. And I apologize, members of the board, there is a little memo for you called proposal, proposal for zoning text amendment. It is out of order in your packet, but it is there, I apologize. On your memo, you will see the definition for building height. The current definition is in black and the proposal is in blue. And I'm gonna try to read it and distinguish it for you if I can. Building height is currently defined as the highest point of a building when measured from the lowest point at which the foundation intersects the ground. Building height shall not apply to minor vertical projections of apparent building including chimneys, flagpoles, flues, spires, steeples, belfries, and couplas. The proposed amendment would change building height to mean the highest point of a building when measured not from the lowest point of intersection, but the highest point or any other portion of the building that first intersects the ground. And would continue to add to the definition, in no event shall the building height exceed fifty feet when measured from the lowest point at which the foundation or any other portion of the building first intersects the ground. The proposal is being put forth for discussion and consideration by the Planning Commission tonight for an advisory review and will move to a first reading at the September city council meeting with your recommendation attached because it was previously, this definition was previously discussed at a city council meeting after we have received a number of variance requests where applications for building permits have found that the definition as currently existing in the ordinance has caused challenges where properties have experienced changes in elevation or other topography conditions which have made this definition very difficult to meet. And also because this current definition, particularly with topography changes, has conflicted a lot oftentimes with the roof pitch requirements, minimum roof pitch requirements, which are also in the zoning ordinance. So anytime, as just the best practice or standard, anytime that you see a number of variance requests dealing with the same provision in the ordinance, that is an indicator that that provision of the ordinance is maybe having some unintended consequences and you need to revisit that provision of the ordinance to make sure that those consequences are in fact intended and not unintended from the, from the ordinance. And so that's why it's being brought forward for you tonight. This doesn't change the height that's in the ordinance, you'll see that in your later documents, it's changing how we measure that height, okay? Now, the analysis, section 125 dash nine, so paragraph three of our code of ordinances gives us the criteria that the city shall consider in making text amendments. And those standards are as follows. A, whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. B, whether the proposed amendment is compatible with the vision, goals, policies, intent, and future land use map for the city and the adopted joint comprehensive plan. And C, whether the proposed amendment is required to address, adequately address new or changing conditions or to properly implement the comprehensive plan. So those are the standards by which you should consider this review tonight and make your recommendations. Mr. Chairman, happy to go into those three factors if any member of the board would like for me to, but because it is a zoning text amendment, we are required by both state and local law to have a public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this proposal. Ten minutes max to those for and against combined.
Okay. Do we start with for or against? Does anyone have any questions on the, any of you guys? Any questions about the request?
No, I wouldn't look today. I, either way, proponents or opponents, either way you'd like to start.
Okay. Would, would anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to the change? No? Okay. For? Okay.
If not, I'm willing to open it for discussion by the members of the Planning Commission.
What do you think?
I'd like to open it for discussion.
Okay, let's do it.
So we're, we're changing the current, the current ordinance.
Basically how you measure height, so the...
How you measure.
Correct, correct. So, you know, different, the different classifications have maximal height limits and so instead of, you know, on a slope foundation, you're measuring from the high point to the peak versus the low point to the peak. So it just became real challenging with some of the topography here to, to make that work efficiently.
So like if you look at Chester's, for example.
Mm-hmm.
How's that measured?
Uh, that will, I guess currently would be measured from the, from the, currently would be measured from the, from East Main Street facade, but on the, what is being proposed, that would be measured from the back side, is that correct?
So, I can't speak to how it would, how it was measured to be permitted because I'm just not familiar with that.
Right.
At, at this point, if we were to receive a building permit application today to measure for building height, we would measure from the lowest point at the foundation, where the foundation intersects with the ground, even if that were a basement, you know, or some other lower level, and we would measure to the highest point. We would do that for all four sides of the building. And if any of those four sides were more than the maximum height allowed in that zoning district, then we would have to deny the building permit. Even if some of that height was maybe below street level or was basement or was otherwise, say, lower because of the topography, elevation changes on, on the property itself.
And, and you'll see, that's CBD too, so that's gonna have a different height than, say, the, like a residence, but I guess what, how it would be proposed is that you'd measure all fours, four corners, I suppose, and the high point would be the new measurement. So like Main Street, in this language, we could not exceed fifty feet is basically what...
And, and that would be no side of the building would be able, because, so our maximum height for any district under the current zoning ordinance is thirty-five feet. Most districts are thirty feet, some are thirty, you know, one or two are thirty-five feet. That would still stand, but it would allow for the, the elevation changes to be taken into consideration in the use of the property and the building height. So you would still say the, you know, at the highest point at which the foundation or any other portion of the building first intersects the ground, we would start there and go to that thirty or thirty-five maximum that the ordinance requires. But if part of the building went below that...
For example, like Harvest Home, prime example.
Where kind of drops off.
But you get two streets.
Right. But at no event, would even with, with the part we've not measured at, would, could we exceed fifty?
And so, and I do have a question regarding, say, subwalls. So is, is subwall considered part of a, a house?
It would be under the current definition.
So on, in the, in the recent residents, one, you know, one, one passed, one got, one was, did not pass, you know, the recent height thing. I, you know, I didn't say anything because I, you know, was sort of new to the game on that one, but what, what did the site plan look like? So what did they, what did the retaining wall that supported the all-street parking look like? Because that's a very steep lot. So, so could, could someone come in there and build the parking area, the pad in the parking area, and then put a house on top of that and measure from that? Or, I mean, how is, I'm a little confused on how that works.
I don't think, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, so I don't want to speak to any examples that you've just raised there, but we, we would measure the building itself.
Okay.
The building itself, we're not measuring in relation, under this proposed definition, we're not measuring from a street, we're not measuring from the parking, you know, we're measuring from the highest point at which the foundation or any other portion of the building intersects with the ground. That would be the definition that the building officials would use in reviewing a set of plans for an application. And that's all that they would take into consideration as far as, as far as doing, you know, performing that measurement.
Okay. Because that's a big, that's...
Well, you go, you go to East Main Street and let's say you go up behind what used to be the farm, the farm, the Blue Ridge Farms, the property behind which is now a parking lot for the high school, basically.
Right, right.
So you dig that out, basically what we're saying is...
That measure would be from Top Street, from East, East First Street.
Yeah.
Side, correct.
Where would we measure on that particular scenario?
The high ground would be, which would be Top, Top Street. Yeah, and then the, the backside could not exceed fifty feet. That's what I read, read this, yeah.
Because you're gonna have to dig in to put that back there.
Yeah. Comes a math game.
But we're saying fifty feet from the, from the ground on the backside.
But, so my, my question is, I'm kind of coming back to that one that, you know, I mean, you, you, you remember the, I mean, I forget where it is, it's up on, above my house. It's steep. So could, could someone say come in and one year, and like this year I'm gonna build a big old, big retaining wall, build a big old flat shell for my future house and then come back next year and, you know, that's gray now, so then I'm measuring from, from new, my new grade, my modified grade or my prior grade? I'm, I'm just, it's just a question I have, I'm, I think that's a big gray area in a property like that. Because I think it's short, that, that property's not buildable, in my opinion.
Well, again, I can't speak to any particular property, that's not the, that's not the subject of this consideration.
Yep.
This is about a, a definition that would go in the ordinance and have to be applied, you know, to all cases, all applications that came before us for review.
So you're asking us to make a recommendation that on this fifty feet would be crossing more freely?
Well, first off, I'm not asking for anything.
But I mean, that's what the council's asking.
Well, I think it's how the, how height's measured, how it's measured from the high ground, which I like that, that move. And the, the fifty feet is, is, is a generous cushion, I, I think, for, because I know, I've seen some basements where it's, it's twelve foot, you know, twelve or fourteen feet floor to floor, and it's, you know, it's a product of topography more than desire because it's, it's just, you know...
If you did like everything that's along East First Street and Robert's Ridge, I mean, there's probably some of the backs of the buildings are, you know, either half are pushing that fifty foot.
Yep, so I'm, you know, I don't...
But, Mr. Panter, to go back to your question, you have three options tonight as a board. You can, I guess four. One is you could recommend approval of this proposed change and that, that recommendation would be passed on as, as advice to the city council. You could certainly recommend against it, you could vote to deny the proposed change. You could, number three, you could, you could table it for further consideration at a, at a later meeting. Or number four, you could suggest a revision to this proposal that you would like to put forward to council. So if you say the fifty, if you would rather see that number be forty-five, you can, you can make it your own recommendation to council that would be passed along to them for consideration. Those are your four choices for action tonight.
Okay.
I have one quick thought, are these on?
I hope so, I'm not sure.
I, I think the thing that helps me the most is when Denny Cook was at the city council meeting and explained the problems that you were alluding to with all the revisions of someone that was not meeting the requirements. And as it was explained at that time, we're still trying to limit basically homes or structures to thirty to thirty-five feet. But some people are on a piece of property like this and they, and, and I'm sure Angie and Rondehead's mothers were there, but my understanding was, we're not trying to build fifty-foot tall structures, we're still trying to limit it to thirty to thirty-five, but for some people because of the slope of the lot, it was getting measured from the foundation side on the opposite side of, say, what I would call the drive-up side if it's a residence or something like that. And it was Denny Cook's comment that as many of these he had looked at, that something like this would help where there's not so many appeals and revisions to explain it that on the second side it can be higher, but we're still trying to have Blue Ridge build structures that are thirty to thirty-five feet, but if it's on a steep slope, some of them have an exceptional situation where it would require that it be higher. But to me, I would not be in favor of something that said you can drive up to something and it's fifty feet tall, but I would say that if someone has, you know, luckily or unluckily has a very steep piece of property and if the drive-up side, and I'm maybe oversimplifying it, is a thirty to thirty-five foot structure, I think that meets the vision of what we're trying to accomplish. And in talking to some others, I think this is a legitimate attempt to confirm Denny and other people of the city's thoughts as to how to resolve that issue.
So, so I, I, can, so kind of responding to what you just said, can we, can the language be manipulated so the, the primary facade of the residence is limited in height, in height, you saw it that fifty foot does?
Yes, you could, a member of this board could certainly make a motion to, for that recommendation to carry forward to the city council. If there was a section of majority...
So the fifty feet could be on the backside or something like that, just don't, we don't want it on the front side.
You could certainly make a motion to include that or amend the definition that's being proposed in that way, yes.
So maybe, so maybe the front of the building is, doesn't exceed the current, what the current cut limits are, you know, the, the primary, the primary facade. And then, you know, the, the backside or a, based on topography, corner or slide in the back or may exceed that height? I mean, if that, that, that sound like a target?
Yeah, I, I, I think when you first look at this and it says fifty feet, it catches your attention.
Sure, sure.
That we're changing things and we're gonna start building fifty-foot structures when I think the goal is to make the process simpler and more better understood and we're still...
And then I would just keep the topography of the city in mind.
Yes, exactly.
In applying its definitions.
And I think Denny explained it well at that meeting, is that something like this would be required to resolve that.
But the height limit is thirty-five feet, correct?
Correct.
In some districts, in others it's thirty.
I think residential's thirty feet.
Residential's thirty.
So residential's thirty feet, say thirty-five's you're into the commercial and CBD type of heights.
Thirty, thirty is residential.
Correct. So what...
So is, and this piece of property is residential, correct?
We're not talking about any particular piece of property, this is an ordinance revision that would apply.
I, I brought up an example when I was asking my questions.
This is ordinance for all property, not all.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Do you want to, you want to try to craft it there? You gonna write notes? I think we just keep the height to the current zoning, the ma, the front, the drive, the main facade, primary facade to the current zoning.
Go ahead and make the recommendation.
I have to sit there and take it out?
You got it.
Have to make, this makes sense. It's easier to word it out.
And we're, we're, if this is not fully involved, we're just making a recommendation to the council.
Correct.
Because they will have the final say.
Oh, yes ma'am, I'll have two readings on it.
Yeah, so there's, so, so, so it... From the highest point at which the foundation or any other portion of the building, so that would have to be reworded, correct? There's that, so, you know, which on the building height, see?
You can craft it in your mind, which is definitely easier.
Really? I got it. Um, okay.
You know, it's a little confusing the way this is written up. It could be tuned up just a little bit.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do and it's, and it's, I, I mean, I know what I, I know what you're, you're saying and I appreciate what you're, what you just said, I agree with it. But just trying to, you know, craft it, so, yeah, so it makes...
You need a table to craft it?
I mean, I can come up with something, but it's just really a recommendation, so it's, I mean, we're...
I got you, Mark.
So, um, okay.
So I think the concept is we're trying to keep things as they are other than having constant exceptions of coming to the city council for approval.
Okay, here we go, here we go.
We're trying to maintain that thirty to thirty-five feet, but in some extreme situations, if someone has bought a cliff property...
Every piece of property's on the...
Well, I, yeah, I know, yeah, you and I were talking about walking hills, we're walking, but, but then this fifty foot, the fifty foot just kind of stands out, but I think it's really trying to accomplish what we want, it's just...
Yep, I agree, I agree. So what, so, so, and y'all don't have a second there, so I can yell cannot, no, we're do it again. So the building height of a meet is the, means the highest point of a building when measured from the highest point at which the foundation, wait a minute, the highest point. Okay, I'm backing out, let me start over. Highest point that was the primary... Yes?
Maybe you say from the backside of the property, the lowest point you can't exceed fifty feet or something.
Correct, I'm trying to get it, I'm trying to get it that simple.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
So, so, I was, but I wanted to say, no, no, I wanted to just reference the current code as far as building heights.
Do you need a table? So you can do some thinking on this?
Well, we're all thinking.
We're all thinking, but...
Can I say something to you? I mean, you can read the fifty though on that side, if somebody leaves behind it.
Yeah, yeah, but you can't, but you, you know, I can show you twenty pieces of property here in town.
Yes, it's a topo thing, I don't think that's a desire, it's just a topo thing. I don't think any, even the builder would want to be doing that if he had a choice.
Anybody, you can just make the motion in plain language.
Okay, so we're gonna say the, 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 the building height means the highest point of a building when measured from the highest point at which the foundation or any portion of the building first intersects the ground. In no event shall the building height of the primary front, primary or frontage facade exceed the current zoning height, nor shall the building at any point exceed fifty, fifty feet in height when measured from the lowest point at which the foundation or any other portion first intersects the ground. Is that a decent, okay?
That was correct.
Building height should not apply to minor vertical projections of apparent building including chimneys, flagpoles, flues, spires, steeples, belfries, and couplas. So in essence, I, I hope, you know, do I have a second?
I'll second to my...
Yay, nay, approve?
Yay.
Yay? Okay. So hopefully we identify the primary frontage or the primary facade is within the current code of thirty feet on a residence, thirty-five feet on a commercial. And then in an extreme topography scenario, we, the, the back could not exceed fifty feet. I think that sounds, that sounds good to me. Okay?
Thank you.
Sorry about all that?
No, that's great, thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you, Doc, Dr., Dr. Barber. Public hearing is consideration of a motion of an application to rezone parcel B R zero two one five three, also known as four sixty West Main Street, Blue Ridge, Georgia, from C one Neighborhood Commercial District to CBD Central Business District.
Okay, thank you, sir. As stated, this is a rezoning consideration from Neighborhood Commercial to Central Business District. The city's ordinance does give us standards in section one twenty-five dash nine to be considered in the exercise of the zoning power in the rezoning of a piece of property. Those are given to you in your packet beginning on what would be page three from the second page of this staff report, and they are as follows. The city shall consider proposed rezonings using the following standards. A, the existing land uses and zoning classifications of nearby property. B, the suitability of the subject property for the uses allowed under the existing zoning. C, whether the proposed rezoning would allow a use that is generally suitable for the site compared to other possible uses and the uses in zoning of adjacent and nearby properties. D, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely affect the economic value or the uses of adjacent and nearby properties. E, whether the subject property can be used as currently zoned. F, whether the proposed rezoning would result in a use which would, would or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, schools, sewers, water resources, police and fire protection, or other utilities. G, whether the proposed rezoning is in conformity with the vision, goals, policies, intent, and future land use map for the city and the adopted joint comprehensive plan. And H, whether there are other conditions or transitional patterns affecting the use and development of the subject property which give grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposed rezoning. Any factors that the staff were aware of are given to you in bullet points. Mr. Chairman, happy to take any questions after the public hearing if you'd like for me to, but we do need to give proponents and opponents of the, of the case an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Does that happen now?
Yes, please.
Proponents of the project, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm Van Williams, my wife is Kimberly Williams, she's the main occupant of the building, Main Street Pediatrics. My partner, Ken Cook, uh, we own the building through a corporation. Um, we rent out the bottom part to various businesses right now. It's a real estate agency and a, an accountant firm. Um, back years ago, when we first built the building, it was all residential, so we had to apply and get, we got the conditional use zoning. And then subsequent to that, most, I think every property, you know, around it, every property that borders was subsequently zoned to commercial business district. And so we're applying for that designation for a variety of reasons. I guess the main of which, uh, full transparency is it makes my property more valuable. It has more uses as CBD than it does, um, as conditional use. So that's pretty much, and we, you know, went through the packet and the, some of the, the questions y'all asked and answered them, I think, in a packet to you guys in the best of my abilities. Don't think it seems to have too many adverse effects on anyone else. Any questions you wanted to ask for me?
How many, how many, um, units or businesses are those building?
The top floor is all one office space, which is my wife's.
Okay.
And then the bottom is three separate office spaces.
Okay. Two currently occupied?
Uh, they're all occupied, yeah. One, uh, virtual realty occupies, two of them, and then a, a, independent accountant occupies the third one downstairs. I say stairs, we don't actually have stairs.
But you're basically requesting rezoning for more flexibility of what you put there.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Everything on that lot's already zoned, see?
Yep. And all the, all the adjacent parcels are, you know, flagship, attorney's office, CBD, art centers, CBD.
Everything from McKinney to Mountain, CBD.
Yeah.
On both sides of the railroad track. And your wife's business is medical?
Yes, that's correct.
That really fits better with the CBD than the, than CBD.
Well, if you, you read the CBD, it's more pedestrian oriented type businesses, and that certainly, in that area, is the dominant mode of, of transport is pedestrian, so.
I don't know why it hadn't already been rezoned.
I, I actually assumed that it was and never looked at a map, and, and then when I did, I realized it was the sort of a little by itself.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, opponents, sorry, I'm doing a hand. Any, any, any opponents to the?
Wait a minute.
None? Any motion?
Uh, I make a motion, uh, the proposal will be approved. Um, it seems logical to me, it should match the surrounding zoning of the immediately adjacent properties. I see no disadvantage to updating that zoning.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any ayes? No? Okay. I guess that's it, right?
Mr. Chairman, that's all the business we have.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, thanks everyone.
Thank you all.